Okay, it is now six P- six PM when I call this governing board regular meeting to order. Can I get an adoption of the agenda?
I move the adoption of the agenda. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I forgot to also mention that we're going to do a moment of si- silence for the mother of Gail Zaire. She's a third grade teacher at Bella Vista. She passed away. The next item on the agenda is board meetings not pre- previously approved. And this would be the minutes of our regular meeting of the first of March 2022 and the minutes of our special meeting on the third of March 2022.
I make motion that we approve our previous minutes. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes for zero. I also want to let the record show that all board members are present with the exception of Mrs. Johnson. The next item on the agenda is our summary of current events. And we'll start with the superintendent, Dr. Holmes.
Thank you, President Bute. Good evening, everyone. This past weekend, the Sierra Vista Herald sponsored the Golden Apple Awards. If you recall, at our last meeting, I listed the names of all the students and staff who were being recognized. But there was a special award given out this weekend, the Crystal Apple Award. And that was given to our own Michelle Wamba for her outstanding work at Carmichael Elementary School. Congratulations. At Buena, spring sports are in full swing. Baseball, track and field, girls softball, boys volleyball. We wish them all good luck with their seasons, and if we can try to catch a game or match this spring, let's try to do that and show our support. COVID-19 update, very good news. According to the CDC, Cochise County has moved down a level. We are now at the community spread level of low. There were no cases last week. Of course, we were on spring break, and there have been none this week within the school district. So it's all very good news, and we hope it stays that way. Over spring break, the Buena Robotics and Cyber Patriots competed. The Cyber Patriots competed in the national competition virtually. We congratulate them for their hard work this year, had a really good outing. The Buena High Robotics competed at the first robotics competition in Flagstaff, and they won.
Yay!
They received the trophy, a plaque, a banner to display at the school, and each team member received a gold medal. So congratulations to them. On March 2nd, we held our yearly Read Across America Title I event. The theme this year was Alice in Wonderland. It was over at Rothry. We had about fifty staff members, teachers and staff, working the event. And we had four hundred and fifteen attendants, four attendance, and students and parents. A great turnout, and it was a wonderful time. There are pictures posted on the website. But it was a really great event. People were really working hard. And I want to give credit to Mrs. Romo and her staff for putting it all together. They do this every year. Last year, it was the drive-through because of COVID. But this year, we were able to have it again at Rothry, and it was a great experience. Everyone had a good time. And lastly, just as a notification, the Sierra Vista Unified School District is aware of a current police investigation of a former employee in our transportation department. The district has cooperated fully with the Sierra Vista Police Department and will continue to do so as they carry out their investigation. Since the investigation is currently active, the district cannot offer any additional comments until the investigation has concluded. And that concludes my updates for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, who wants to go first? Holly?
I don't have any name this evening.
Okay. Kim?
Just congratulations to everybody and all those who move forward and course now.
And congratulations to the robotics team, the Cyber Patriots, for being able to do theirs remotely. And the Read Across America sounds really wonderful. That was good. So, thank you.
For me, I just want to say welcome back from spring break to all the teachers. Hopefully, everybody enjoyed that. I also wanted to send a congratulations out to Jackie Clay. She was picked for the State Board of Education of the government, so I'm pretty proud of that, put us on the map. And that's all I have, so we'll go ahead and move on. And the next item on the agenda is a presentation on Target Support and Improvement by Mrs. Romo.
Thank you all so much. Every year, we do an update on the status of our schools that are in improvement. And so that's, this is our yearly report. We're getting ready for our second visit of the year with our Arizona Department of Education contact, where we all meet together. And so the principals of the schools will be coming up and participating in this presentation as well. Ms. Rada has also joined us as just a full-fledged member this year and really supporting us. And we'll talk a little bit about, again, just a reminder, not just for you all, but for the public as well, in regards to how did the schools become labeled as a TSI school, and what do they have to do to get out? Again, this definitely ties into our focus on student achievement. So good. What does it stand for? It stands for Targeted, Support, and Improvement. Okay, which is what we're hoping to do for all students. How did we, how did we have these schools become TSI schools? This all actually happened pre-COVID. So it is required, though, under ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, with any group, any school that has a subgroup of students who, when they take their state assessment, if they take the on-grade-level state assessment, they rank order on how those students did. And so we had some subgroups of students who are identified who did not, who scored in the bottom percentage. And so that's how you get those labels. So this was about four years ago that these schools received that label. So again, it can be broken down into the different areas that ESSA provides us data back on would be on major racial, ethnic groups, subgroups with students with disabilities, English language learners, and students who are economically disadvantaged. Those are the categories that are required under the federal ESSA requirements that we look and continue to watch to see how they're doing academically. At the time that this was done, you had to have at least twenty students in one of those subgroups to be counted. So some of our other schools, it's not that they wouldn't have qualified or that their scores were so much better for those subgroups. It's just they didn't have twenty students, so they weren't part of the conversation. And so for Arizona at that time, taking your English Language Arts, how did they do on that reading and writing portion? And how did they do on the math? And they identified any school district that fell in that bottom thirteenth percentile. And when you're identified as a TSI school, you're in TSI for three years. No matter if it was the very first time you had ever been identified for any sort of improvement, when you go in, you're in for three years. Well, now let's think about what's happened with assessments in the last three years in Arizona. Really, the schools didn't have an opportunity to get out of school improvement or to be able to show. One year, the state didn't test at all, so there were no results. The next year, they had everybody keep their results from the year prior, which sounds good unless you're in school improvement, because then you can't show or you can't prove that. So that's actually happened two years in a row. So this will be the first year that those scores would actually get to be looked at. But the state has now decided, everybody's going to go out of school improvement at the end of this year, no matter what. So all of our schools that are in right now at the end of this year will all be out. And then the state will relook at the results from this year, which we still say, still a wonky year, right? I mean, lots of absences, that sort of thing. But they will take this year's results, re-identify, and identify the bottom thirteen percent. So our schools have been working incredibly hard, and we'll talk about how, what the things that they have been doing to help support those subgroups. So hopefully, we don't have to do this presentation for you next year. So we do have currently three schools in our district that are TSI schools. That would be Village Meadows Elementary, and that would be for special education students. Joyce Clark Middle School, also for special education students. Buena High School had two subgroups, special education and English language learners. So one of the things that we have all of our schools go through is doing a comprehensive needs assessment. We have our sites that are TSI schools or CSI schools comprehensive support. Dig a little bit deeper. We do a quarterly data dig with them. And they are required to kind of basically do a report out to Dr. Holmes, to myself. If they're a TSI school, then Ms. Rada is in the room. I also have other curriculum folks that are in the room, so that we can see how can we help and support them through this work. So they do a needs assessment on these six principles, from leadership, teachers instruction, organization of time, to the curriculum, to conditions climate, culture, family, community engagement. Those are the six categories that the state gives us to basically do a needs assessment. And it's not just done by the principals. It's the principals and their school come together and do that needs assessment work. So usually, it starts out with kind of a leadership team at the site, where they go through, and there's like, oh, gosh, the principals could tell me even better than I do, but hundreds of questions that they go through on each of these different areas and identify what areas are an area of weakness or an area that they think that they could focus in on. And then they take it to their whole school, and then most of them take it to their school site council that has parents on it, PTOs, that sort of thing to share. So when I always meet with them at the beginning, I say, to be able to make a needs assessment process work, there's some things that you got to be really upfront and honest about, and that's honesty. You can't sugarcoat it. We can't just make, try to make things look pretty. We have to address when things are not working well, that we have to address those. And we have to really take our feelings aside and have true data to back things up. I attended a conference one time that said, in God we trust, all others must bring data. And so that's one of those things. Try to stay away from those feelings and those hunches. I don't think the kids are doing well because I think maybe, no, let's really look at it, and let's see what's causing the struggles. And you have to be willing to consider new ideas. You can't just put the exact same plan in that you did last year. If you've already proven through your data that it didn't work, you have to be willing to open and try new things. And that's why I have to say kudos to the schools, because they truly have been open to trying new things. One of the things that we've done is bringing in coaches to specifically work on how how to help the school support these subgroups of students. And so they've been going through that. I'm sure we'll, you'll hear a little bit more about that from them. So basically, just that we have to all come together and just really work together to try to make things better. So what have we done as a district? What have we put into place from like our level? We have monthly TSI meetings, and where those schools all come together to discuss the progress of their subgroups with myself and the ESS director, Ms. Rada. So every month, we get on, usually it's a Zoom or Google Meets call. And we have an agenda that we follow. We keep a running agenda, and we talk about how are things going? What's the data looking like? Whether it's not always just academic data, but also could be referral data or attendance data. And we just kind of talk through how are things going, specifically looking at those subgroups. We have other processes in place where we are looking at the whole population of kiddos, but these meetings are specifically about the subgroups that have been identified and caused them to be improvement. And then again, like I just mentioned, we coordinated coaching. We've just found that that works really, really well, to have somebody from the outside of our district who comes in every, come in every month and meet with teams from those schools. And so the schools have worked really hard to be able to pull together special education teachers, general education teachers, administrators. They bring them together, come together, then they meet with that coach. And the coach kind of helps them with an action plan that you'll hear about, and always has a, hey, when you come next month, you got to have this done. Because we all know, we can all attend meetings, and we go to meetings, and we listen, we nod our heads, and then we go back and we get busy, and we forget about it. They really have a plan in place that works super well, where there's always follow-up to what they've done. So we've found coaching models work really well. And then again, I mentioned those benchmark analysis reviews that we do with Dr. Holmes and I and Ms. Rada to basically go and dig into their data and see how they're doing on their needs assessment, as well as on their assessment data. So I'm going to invite up Mr. Skarsus. He's going to come up first for Village Meadows. And he's going to just talk a little bit. This is, all of the schools put together action plans based off their work with their, it's called Yes We Can Coach, and so he's going to talk to you a little bit about that process.
So in the end of the year, continued struggle to develop collaborative relationship between general ed and sped. And this is a problem that, you know, many schools have had going back many years. We have our kids, and you have your kids, and we need to get over that idea to come together that we, all of our kids are all of our kids. And so that is something that has been a struggle. There's been an ongoing conflict around whose job it is, so. And then lack of small group differentiated instruction, especially in the groups four through six. We see a lot of that in the elementaries, doing small group work. And then as they get older, a lot of times, we see more of just whole-class instruction and not as much of that small group of differentiation. So that's some, those are things that we saw as concerns. What we wanted is to build progress on last year, where we initiated this team analysis of common assessments, where each grade-level team gives common assessments to all their kids, and then compares those, sees how all the kids are doing on those, where are areas we need to help kids with more support, where are areas where kids are really getting it, and we can give them, you know, additional kinds of enrichment? And so coming together, when we want both general and sped teachers to come together, work on this. All teachers will more effectively differentiate instruction. That's something that we want to continue working on. It's good for all students, but especially for our students who are most in need. So steps we've taken this year. In those team meetings that we have, each grade-level team comes together weekly to look at data. We haven't always included special education teachers in those meetings. So that's something we made sure that every, every week when we meet, that both special education and general education teachers are coming together to collaborate and to bring their individual, their expertise, bring it together. Provide teachers increased time and resources, systematically address struggling students. So we have SST, is the Student Success Teams. We look at students who are having trouble, and what do we need to put in place specifically? And so we have our school interventionist, our school counselor, our general education teachers all come together and, and look at kids who may not be in special education at this point. But we want to see if there are kids who either need to be, or if we can provide additional interventions so that special education isn't necessary. Again, looking at all of our kids, helping them all succeed. And providing teachers training and resources to more effective differentiated small group instruction. So those are the things we're doing this year.
Thank you so much. So thank you, and I wanted to just share too, we've been doing learning walks. Every Tuesday, we go to different schools to visit. And we have teachers from the site that are a part of that process. There's district leadership. There's some folks from curriculum when we go. And we're really focusing in on our district initiatives of implementing the PBIS and implementing things like student engagement and providing feedback to us, to all students, and collaborative, structured collaborative groupings. And we finished theirs today. This was our third time to go in. And what an improvement from the beginning of the year till now. And all of our schools are making great growth. But it was really exciting to see that the schools really focusing in on how do we help provide supports to all students who need it. And just for those who are not always in the education world, that first word says continued struggle to develop collaborative relationships. It's not that they don't get along. It's that they both have very busy schedules, right? So special education teachers, they don't just teach one grade level. They might have all the K-three special education students. And so it's how do I get them to a meeting with the general education kindergarten team when they're meeting? So it's a scheduling thing that we're trying to work out. They, they love each other a lot. It's only they don't get along. Joyce Clark, so Mr. Holmes is going to talk to us a little bit about the action plan that they have.
There's a little bit of a common theme, so there's not enough collaboration between our special education teachers and our core teachers. We noticed that. And then our special education teachers don't always participate in the benchmark data discussions. So those are the things that we noticed, that we found that we needed to fix. So we wanted to do that. And so we, at our leadership, or excuse me, at our afternoon professional learning community meetings, we set specific timeframes where, so they could get to two meetings if they needed to, so that they would make sure that the things that they wanted to cover would be, at the beginning of the meeting, that they went to first, and at the end of the meeting, that they later were able to go to, so they could kind of get to two places at the same time. And we're making sure that they're part of the data discussions that we have, and we look forward to continuing that. It's gotten well so far.
And I was really proud of his team. We have another coach that comes in and works with us on our professional learning communities time, and there ended up being some time where our consultant had time to be able to meet with any other site principals that wanted to. And his, actually, instead of Mr. Hill coming, he actually, he had his team from the Yes We Can come, and just to brainstorm some more ideas, that just that true, having that focus of how do we help support kids who are struggling? And so kudos to that team for coming and doing that today. They, she said they left really excited and like, oh, we can see what we could do next. So that's exciting. And Ms. Young and Ms. Can I come up to talk about Buena High School?
Not yet. So I think you're going to see the same comment out of this that Mr. Hill talked about and Mr. Skarsus that we noticed. We had teachers with maybe that disconnect, and they weren't looking at the data. The same as our, our ESS teachers weren't looking at the same data that our content teachers were looking at. And so making sure that we did that. As you know, we brought back cold time, so having that reteach time that's available for students to get something that they may have missed. And then we noticed we needed more instructional supports that were focused on student engagement. The more hands-on that students can get and diving into what they're learning, then the better prepared they're going to be and understand that learning. So those were some of our first steps. We wanted to make sure we brought back cold time. We wanted to make sure that we were starting to analyze data and then increase student engagement so that those things would keep happening. And so we've been working on that as part of our learning walks. It's one of the things that we looked through that was an area of focus this year to try to increase student engagement. We wanted to make sure that we were using common assessments, so that if you're taking English and I or US history, that in that class, no matter which teacher you have, you're getting assessed on the same things. We know that they're all walking out of that classroom with the same content. Doesn't mean that everybody teaches it the same, but the assessments are the same. We wanted to create that data review process, so using that team analysis concept that Mr. Skarsus talked about, and then analyzing the ESS data with that. And then having our ESS teachers be part of the whole process and be part of the conversation and go to those meetings.
We'll start a line on the wall here. And again, Buena High School's also just really jumped in. They brought a team together today also to specifically talk about our kiddos. And I just think that's one of the things, from all the meetings that I get to participate in, is just, I think I think you should be really proud of, our community should be really proud of, is that our teachers really do want to find ways to help support our students. They do truly care about that. Not that they didn't before, but sometimes it's kind of like when you, when you know better, you do better, sort of thing. And I think just because we've been having more conversations about it, I've just been really, really proud of them with the work that they've been doing. And one of the things that's important, too, is that in our, in our state, we teach the state standards. We are given, here are the standards that you are to teach in English Language Arts. Here are your math standards, fifth-grade teacher, or algebra two teacher, or geometry teacher. Here are your health standards. Here's your PE standard. I mean, like, it is laid out for us, for our teachers, by grade level, what standards that they are to teach. Well, one of the things, though, that was kind of an eye-opener is sometimes students who are in, maybe in special education or English Language Learners, they weren't getting access to all of that, because maybe they were getting pulled at a time where they were missing that math standard with that teacher, because they weren't in the classroom with them. They were getting pulled out. And so that's been one of the big conversations is, hey, this kiddo at the end of the year still has to take the state assessment, even if they are in special education, or even if they are English Language Learners, or they're, you know, free and reduced lunch. They still are taking the same assessment, so we have to ensure that they get access to the same standards as everyone else does. So that's, sometimes people are confused about, what are you teaching out there? We teach the state standards. That's what we are required to do. You as a board signed off on that. Those are the standards that we teach. Okay, so now we talk a little bit about data. I'll turn it back over to Village Meadows.
So I'm not going to read all the numbers for you, but as you can see, our sped teachers have reported that our, our students are overall meeting their IEP goals. And looking at, Star Reading is for grades one through three, Galileo is for two through six, that the majority of our kids are making progress on the, from the beginning to benchmark to the middle. And, and we've, we've seen that our, our end of the year has come out, and those are doing, are looking very good as well. And so in our sped autism program as well, we have some kids who, even though they're in that autism program, are also in general education classes as well. They, they're in both. And so those kids are generally doing well as well, so.
And that was exciting, too, just going to, we were there today, like I said, and you couldn't, you couldn't see. You couldn't tell them autism students who are right in the classroom were learning right along with their peers. It was really exciting to see. Joyce Clark?
We didn't get quite the gains that we hoped. You could see that just school-wide, we weren't quite making as much gains as we did. And as school-wide did, it's not quite as good for our sped students. Same with our eighth-grade math. It's even lower there. At the same time, we came a little bit closer in the ELA, but then again, we didn't get nearly the gains that we wanted. I do, I don't want to blame anything on COVID, but the last two years has been, it's hard. When learning is hard, and you put extra stuff in it, it's been hardest for some of our sped students when they were trying to work online. And so I feel like trying to fill in some of those gaps has become even harder for them, and it's a struggle. So we're trying really hard to help fill those gaps back in. I wish we could go back two years ago's data, because our growth for our sped kids was actually better than our school in terms of growth, making more than a year's gain compared to their peers. And so, but at the same time, we have these years' kids this year, and we need to commit to even do better for them. So that's what our data is. It's not particularly great, but it's where we're going.
And these would be second quarter benchmarks. There'll be one more round of data that comes in that we'll do a benchmark review on. Buena High School?
I think for us, what you're going to see is similar to what Mr. Hill talked about with, our data isn't exactly what we want to see. But one thing I want to point out, when you see the numbers in parentheses, that's how many students are in that category. So when we look at pushing for growth, and it says there's no change, it doesn't mean that their data didn't change. They did improve. They just didn't come to a higher proficiency. So these students might have been minimally proficient in the beginning, and now they're partially proficient. But because they're not proficient, they're not making the growth that this would pick up. So I do want to point that out. So some of those that you see no change, we are making growth. It's just not growth enough towards proficiency, so it may not be moving them the needle quite enough. But we do know that we've got But we do know that we've got areas that are, we have some things that we obviously need to look at this year, dealing with some of those with students being out, but also having some long-term subs in some programs. And so how we can reorganize our schedule to best fit the needs of like our Algebra One students, our Geometry students, so we can, we can help them better. We've looked at, with working with Ms. Branna and ESS, having our, our IEP goals focus on standards this year, and having us write better IEP goals, so that we can really target to help those students in the areas that they may be helping in. So I know Ms. McDaniel's gonna talk a little bit more about our data, but I do want to point out that when we see that there's no change, it's the, it's the push on the other side of proficiency. Let you kind of tell them where you see the improvements.
So, like Ms. Young said, you know, our students may not be showing growth on benchmark tests, but our teachers have really fought in, in the PLC process, and it's really showing in our departments. They're looking at our assessments and looking at what students are struggling, and especially our ESS and our EL students, and where we can provide them extra supports. And then they're reteaching our standards, and we're reassessing. And, and every single department and subject that we are reassessing, we are seeing growth on our students from test one to test two. It's the same standard that they're testing on, it's just a different test that they're looking at. We're looking at misconceptions in the tests, and you know, what they may be struggling with in the first assessment. And so, we are seeing growth in those common summative assessments that they're, that each grade level and department is giving, but we may not be seeing the growth on the benchmark, but that's going to trickle down and provide that, that growth for them.
So, what is next? I mean, like I said, we don't sugarcoat it, and we share it like it is, we're transparent with it. So it's not where we want it to be, but definitely work being put into place to make those improvements. So again, the district, the monthly TSI meetings will continue. Again, Ms. Branna and myself will work together. We will, if, if any of our schools remain in TSI, we will reach out to and submit for the TSI grant that has provided the Yes We Can coaching. If we don't receive it, we'll look at other funding sources, because we feel like it's really a valuable training and a valuable experience for our, our schools to go through. And the benchmark analysis process will continue as well. Village Meadows will talk to you about some of the things that they're gonna have in place.
We've implemented this year a school-wide reading program. It's independent reading, getting, trying to get kids, in addition to what they do in class, to read out on their own and independently build their reading skills. We have a celebration at the end of each quarter for kids who, who have met their reading goals. And that has been a lot of fun for the, the kids, and they come up and tell me all the things they're reading. And so that, I think that's going really well. Student data tracking. Kids will do better if they know, if they have some goals, if they set their own goals. This is how I did on, on the benchmark test last time, this is where I want to get to next time. And you, you go into a classroom and they, the kids can bring their, their chart and show you just where they are and where they want to get to. And so, we want that improved sped and gendered collaboration, we're working on that, and that is happening. And we're continuing to learn this new math curriculum that, that we, the HMH. And so that, we're seeing improvements in that, as teachers learn that.
So our special education teachers ran into all of our, our subject area PLCs, professional learning communities, and they shared again to make sure that they knew how to, our teachers were able to pull the accommodations, see what needs to happen. Something we do annually, but we did it on a smaller level, so that they, we could prove that they were all able to access and support our students better. We want our special education teachers, and they will be, a more integral part of our data analysis, support students in the classroom as much as possible through our sped support. And so, we're gonna be adjusting our master schedule a little bit, that we already have some very specific things that we plan to do, and we're currently getting ready for our new schedule. And I think that's- And then we're at Title I tutoring, looking into next year, so that we can have some very small groups to work with, or teacher, or tutor-student ratio that should really support our students more. I think that's the key part, so I think-
Anything else Buena High School wants to say?
So I think the only big thing for us is that we're gonna continue working with the Yes We Can, and then making sure that our master schedule has the right times to pull students out, and so that they're using cold time more effectively, as that's when teachers can meet, or the ESS teachers specifically, to meet with their ESS students. And then just tracking the progress and looking at those, those groups and seeing where they're, they're needed to be, and then that portion in the classroom in the right areas.
So that concludes our yearly update. We're always happy to come back at any time to answer any questions. Like I said, we meet monthly at our meetings and look at more kind of the data like Ms. McDaniel was sharing about at their site level, and we're definitely really seeing some growth there. We're just ready for it to start popping on our, like our benchmark results. So, any questions from the board? Yes?
Kind of the same question, but looking at it two different ways. So, growth and success is growth and success, you know, and you're finding it in these areas at these schools with these student groups. How are you translating those lessons across the district? Because I assume there's some good lessons in there for everybody, so that's like one half of my question. The other half of my question is, does the TSI program have a way to share best practices from across the state? You know what I mean? Because I just, like-
That was my first question when we first got into TSI, and it was new for our state as well. And there wasn't a lot of, that's one of the things I continue to ask for is, are there other schools that are in this situation that we could meet and talk together? You know, like, wouldn't that be a great to do best practices? They have not done that yet. I've been told that's a good idea, so a good idea. And so we hope that that comes together, but that's sort of what spurred, that's why I told them, when we have our audit with them, is that we see the value in having them be able to share. Ms. Wambach also attends for her school as well, just so that, just to be able to have those opportunities. And when we did the initial Yes We Can training, we brought in all of our schools, regardless of TSI status, just so that they could start having that conversation and create an action plan about, how do you ensure that all students are being considered in the decisions that we make? Because sometimes you look at your scores, you go, oh, yeah, they're doing okay. And then if you really dig deeper, it's like, oh, but these kiddos aren't doing so well, we can't forget about them. And I think the type of form that I know that Mr. Skarhus mentioned, and it was on there, all of our schools are utilizing that form, a way to track data, and it actually breaks down, so here's our whole school's data by teacher, and then it goes into, how did our special education students do, how did our ELL students do, any subgroup that we wanted to look at? If we had that issue at a specific school, we could look at that by gender, by whatever it was, we could look at it all different ways, because you just want to make sure that we're not leaving any kids behind. So, I hope at some point they'll hear that suggestion about sharing across the whole state, those folks who are involved. But in the meantime, we're gonna just make sure that we continue to do this. They said most schools don't meet, if they're lucky, if they meet a couple of times, and that most of them don't even present to their boards about it. And I said, no, we think it's important that our board's informed, and that we continue to talk on a regular basis about how we're doing. So, our kids deserve it, I would want that for my own child, so.
Anything else? Thank you, Mrs. Branna.
Thank you.
Thank you to the staff too. Okay, our next presentation is gonna be our budget update from Mr. McGovern.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ready for some exciting numbers?
Oh, yes.
All right.
I'll use.
Well, I want to point out, because when we get to the second presentation, it definitely shows some transparency, accountability, but also resource management, things that we've done in the past are really coming to fruition now. So, let's look at our FY22, where we're standing right now with our budget-controlled funds. Everything is in good shape. We don't have anything in the negative balance. We still have a decent M&amp;O potential carryforward. We're gonna try to, to grow that a little more, so in case we have another problem, don't want to bring up the, you know, the aggregate expenditure limit again, but we have to kind of plan on that until we have a permanent solution, so we want to be ready for that. Any questions on the budget control funds? All right. Moving right into the cash-controlled funds, we do have a couple of negatives. This one, just like on our last monthly update, we're still waiting for the payment for those 2,500 prombooks. You know, it's just, it's a timing thing with the, the payment from the, the federal government through the great program. And then we do have a reimbursement that we're waiting for, for the, from SFB, for one of the assessments that we did. And I left this blank, hoping to give you a, we have a drum roll for a big reveal. That is our cash balance in our food service fund right now. That's not a typo, $839,000. And it's attributed to an increase in the reimbursement rate, as well as the participation rate. So, what we did last year is really paying off now. It's, that, that's very exciting to see that grow every month, so. And I might add, that's also with all of the supply chain issues that we continually are working through. Food Service Department had to come in last week, because they were told they got some food service, some food deliveries, so of course they run down here to accept those, because they don't want them rejected. So, that's amazing with all those problems that they have to encounter, yes?
And so that freezer that was installed, like that's all done, and helping assist with being able to receive those big shipments and take advantage of?
We would have hoped, but because it took forever to get here, it'll be, it should be fired up this, I'm hoping this week, but yeah, we barely got it installed a week ago due to supply chain issues.
But we're still doing well, okay?
Oh, yes.
And that should only, I would say, assist, yeah.
Right, because as we get, remember, we get commodities from the federal government, and when we get those and use those, that means that we decrease the expenditures that we have to spend with, with SFB, and we get a credit for those. So the more we can have, the less we have to spend. Yep. Any questions on the cash control funds? All right, club balances. We have a total of 323,156.22 in all, all balances at all sites. Here's our, our elementaries. As we discussed before, elementaries don't have a lot of activity. We're trying to encourage, you know, the use of, mainly through their student council, because the older kids can control those. Here's middle school, 93.40. We don't have a ton of activity there either, so we're trying to ramp that back up. Now that they're able to utilize some of these funds, hopefully they can, they can start using those. And then finally, the big one is the high school, with $304,000. They've done a decent job of not fundraising too much, because we're trying to get them to spend down some of these larger balances. And, you know, I know the basketball team had quite a bit at the beginning of the year, they'd used some of that, so. Overall, not a ton of activity, but we do, we, we are encouraging them to have more. Any questions on club balances? All right. Any questions overall on how, how the district is? With your permission, I'll jump right into the food service.
Okay, that's the, thank you for the budget report. And yeah, we're gonna move on to the food service equipment report, and Mr. McGovern's gonna do that also.
All right. So I want to give a little recap. I went back to our, through our records, and we reported in June of '21, we had a negative $480,603.23 that we had to make up in the food service program. Quite a big difference. As I just showed you, we have a positive $839,3138. So, from last June to now, that's a change of $1.319 million. It's amazing in one year. We can't say enough for, for where this is, where this has come in less than a year. However, if we project out very conservative, because we still have, that, that, those numbers do not include March, even though we're in March, we haven't finished March, we don't do those claims until the following month. So, March, April, and May, that's our projected cash, $1.163 million. However, ADE doesn't allow us to just carry that big, huge cash balance and do nothing with it. They will come in and sweep it, figuring, using their formula, we can have $324,000 on hand at the end of June. So we have to spend $839,000, right? And this is in the food service department only. We can't use this to supplement any other program in the district, transportation, teacher salaries, support staff, none of that. We have to spend it in the food service program. So what we're proposing is new seating at every single cafeteria, and then SFB went through and did their analysis of all the equipment that needs to be replaced, upgraded, or updated. And then we're gonna do some painting and other upgrades. So we're gonna get to that $839,000. But I just want to point out, that is very conservative. That's actually one of our worst months. So if you look at some of our better months, it's a net cash of $150,000. So this could potentially be more that we have to spend. We'll, we'll continue to monitor that. As I said, only food service. And out of this here, this is what we're gonna, this is on the agenda tonight, we're gonna ask you to approve cafeteria seating and the kitchen equipment. The reason why we want to do it as soon as possible is because of this lag, right? They're talking 16, 18, 20 weeks out for some of this stuff. We would really like to get it in before the next school year. So what are we looking at each? In the cafeterias, we'd like new seating, new paint, and then some other aesthetic upgrades. We want people to, our, our students, staff, and parents to walk into our cafeterias and, and have a wow factor. It's like, yes, everything looks nice, looks uniform, and it's a place where you would want to eat. So that's, that's a goal number one. Kitchen equipment at each site. SFB, like I mentioned, they went through and they identified, and there are some items that they're cooking with, which are, I go and I look, and I'm like, wow, how are you even using that? And I don't even know my way around a kitchen, it's like, this is amazing. So they've identified large equipment as well as small wares, which is your serving, your, your utensils, that kind of stuff that they cook with. So we'll be getting new serving line equipment, which is, is in desperate need of updates. And then we are also gonna do some new salad bar service equipment, so we can start serving salads again. We're in desperate need of that. So, that's exciting. All the changes we made, now we can actually start seeing the, the end result is brand-new equipment and seating. With that, are there any questions?
So, well, thank you for the good news. So currently, the federal government is funding free lunches for every student.
That's correct.
Which I believe will be ending at the end of the school year, possibly.
Possibly, it has not been renewed, that's correct.
Okay. How do, have you thought about how that may affect participation in, in food service next year, not having that? Like, you know, because obviously, you know, the numbers might not be, like, how do you factor that in? What are you thinking?
Right, so what, what we did was, I sat down with SFB, and we did some projections, realistic projections of participation rates that we hopefully are gonna see. And instead of like a $1.1 million ending cash balance next year, we're probably looking at $400,000. So about a 60-plus percent drop, because the rates are gonna go back down, because right now they're elevated, and obviously, participation isn't gonna be 100% because they all need free. So, yeah, we definitely took that in, and we just used some, some conservative data from SFB's other sites from years past. We couldn't use ours, because it's, you know, it's not really apples to apples.
Yeah, we never kind of had that year to figure out what our participation would be with the new service provider.
And the other thing is, right now, we're not able to, you know, give all the options that we wanted to, because of the limitations, and, I mean, just breakfast alone is a nightmare, because we can't get anything. So we're hoping that changes, once this goes away, if it goes away, that it'll take, and reduce the strain on the, on the supply lines.
So there's potential, so we expect it to decline, but there's also potential for it to increase because of other factors, just-
I would, I would doubt that it would increase if they get rid of the summer, because we're, we're working under the summer feeding option, which is all kids eat free. Once you go back down, back to the normal National School Lunch program, then it's gonna be the free and reduced, as well as full pay. So you're not gonna get 100% participation in the school.
Well, you'll still have your CEP schools, though. You have four of them.
You will have CEP, which will be able to participate, and that, that's a good point. Um, but you're at a reduced rate. We don't get the same. So they did increase, because of the SRE COVID funding, they increased the reimbursement rate per meal. Yeah.
And just what that means is that, right, before COVID, we had four schools that were already receiving free breakfast and free lunch every day based off their free and reduced, um, lunch population. That will come back into play, um, when we, when we come back. So of our eight schools, four of them will still remain on that program.
So, like, everything, things just are constantly changing in here, constantly adjusting and planning and, okay.
Yeah, the good news is, we don't project a loss.
Okay, there you go.
So I'll, I'll take a sixty-five percent decrease if it still means we have four, four hundred thousand dollars, so.
So what about, uh, summer school? Will that factor in, or does it stop the free and reduced lunch? It doesn't stop?
Yes.
It goes all the way through summer school, right?
Only for certain schools and certain, um, students. So we have to, that's gonna be an interesting one. If they don't re-up the program, um, there's some concern that they're gonna end it on June thirtieth, but yet, if you remember, the, the federal government's, uh, calendar year ends in September, so they might extend it at least through September. So we'll see. But yes, we'll be able to provide, uh, summer feeding for a certain population, depending on, we'll provide food for everybody, but not all of it will be free, or potentially not be free, let's put it that way.
So I guess encouraging the parents to fill out those forms, which we have a hard time doing.
Right.
Um, the free and reduced lunch forms that we do, we need to encourage that more when school starts.
Absolutely, because it affects our Title I funding, it affects our, our, uh, funding for, for, um, the kids when they, they eat. Uh, and, you know, I'll give a plug out for our impact age forms. I know the parents don't like to fill that out. Fortunately, we're able to use, um, prior year again, one more time, but we got maybe twenty percent participation. That means our funding, we wouldn't even have been eligible for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly, and we use that a lot to, to assist in trainings and stuff like that.
And that's just one of those additional factors that influences what we're able to spend per student is, is what we're able to qualify based on
Correct.
the different programs and people participating in it and filling out the forms. Some districts are really, really good at getting those returned at a, at a high rate, and it needs more money for their students.
Right, 'cause if the money is there, it just won't be allocated to us if we don't get those forms back.
Does anybody have anything else? Thank you, Mr. McGovern, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then next item on the agenda, agenda is our public comments. And I want to remind everyone that we cannot speak to these, but we're listening, and that everyone has three minutes. And we'll start with Randall Limbach.
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 Uh, Randall Limbach, Sierra Vista. I'm here to discuss culturally responsive teaching. There are four characteristics of culturally responsive teaching. CRT requires teachers who are empathetic and caring, teachers who are reflective about their beliefs about people from other cultures, teachers who are reflective about their own cultural frames of reference, teachers who are knowledgeable about other cultures. I don't have any children, but I do care about generations of young minds having been and continually being indoctrinated to think a certain way, to promote the propaganda of the day. I don't want my tax dollars supporting left or right-wing propaganda. I don't want misguided and judgmental views of an educator, misguiding and judging my neighbor's children. I don't want children to be compelled to learn about the struggles of sexually confused or even America-loathing classmates. I don't want children to be compelled to carry the burden of an educator's struggles with his or her own sexual identity, or, I'm sorry, his or own identity, whether it be race, culture, or sexuality. I do expect our educators to educate students to think independently, to teach proper English, writing, literature, science, mathematics, and history. I expect our local educators to strive for academic performance far beyond the current forty-five percent competency, for instance. We have so easily accepted in English and mathematics. Culturally responsive teaching, in my opinion, is a precursor to critical race theory, and it will ensure the continual dumbing down of our children population. I ask that you give parents, the, parents and the community more time to review your curricula, uh, specifically regarding CRT. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Charlie Pace.
Sheba.
Sheba. Next, we have Donald Lee.
Good evening, governing board and administration. I can only imagine you are probably wondering to yourselves, this guy again? I thought we got rid of him a few weeks ago. Well, not so fast. I thought after all, we have been through the last few months, it is only fitting to return in person and say thank you publicly. So I'm here tonight to say thank you for making the very difficult decision to remove, dare I say, almost a cuss word, you may have to bleep it out later, the mask mandate, a couple of weeks ago. I also wanted to thank all of you for your dedicated service in such uncharted time in our history. During the last two years, any or all of you could have thrown in the towel and said, this is not what I signed up for, but you didn't. We really appreciate that, so hold your heads high and know that we, as parents, are very grateful and want to assist you in any way we can, uh, not make your job harder.
Thank you, Donald. Mr. Lee, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Steve Conroy. Good evening.
Again, my, uh, point of view is to talk about, a little bit about CRT and about our current, uh, selection of books for the schools, which is coming up. I, I think the real key that we need to understand is that, you know, CRT's been around for forty, over forty years. It's a theory that deals with the core idea that race is a social construct, and that, in fact, it really doesn't really deal with our own, uh, personal, uh, prejudices or biases, but it's embedded in our legal system and in our policies. My belief is that over the time, over the years, we have, as a nation, improved on those things continuously, so that the law actually protects everybody. I also believe that, you know, God created each one of us in His own likeness and image, and He gave us all different, uh, physionomies, um, mental capabilities, skill levels, likes and dislikes, so that we would be interesting to each other, and not that we would be ashamed or disappointed or fearful of others, and that we would enjoy each other. And I went and reviewed our books, the Wonder Series by McGraw, and they readily admit that it's a culturally, um, responsive training, or relevant training, and that basically is a carryover for CRT. They effectively are the same animals. And the idea is that it eventually says that our children should be concerned and aware of each other as really different, not as just people that we like or dislike, but people that are different because of their race or their color. And I don't believe in that. So I really believe that you need to take a real close look at the, the Wonder Series. It is CRT-based, and I would recommend that the school board not accept those books, especially at the cost of a million dollars. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our consent agenda.
Can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we, well, I would like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented with the exception of removing item number twenty from the PA report on advice from human resources.
There was a motion on the floor.
Second.
It's been seconded, all in favor? Well, hold on, is there any discussion?
I just, I just wanted to go and see it real quick.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? I oppose, passage four zero. The next item on the agenda is policy consideration, second reading. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and adopt on second reading the policy revision recommended by administration of the following policies. GDBC, support staff supplementary pay and overtime. GCD, professional staff vacation and holiday. GDD, support staff vacation and holiday.
The policy revisions are necessary after adoption of the new wage schedules approved by the governing board during its December seventh, two thousand and twenty-one meeting, and because of incorporating Juneteenth as a national holiday in the school calendar. Administration recommends adoption on second reading in accordance with policy BGB.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes for as well. The next item, discussion and action, renewal of the intergovernmental agreement between Cochise County Community District and Sierra Vista Unified School District for clinical practice, practice internship and externship. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action regarding the renewal of the intergovernmental agreement between Cochise County Community District and the Sierra Vista Unified School District for the clinical practum and internship and externship for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five.
This intergovernmental agreement enables college students to participate in clinical practicums or internships, externships, experiences to satisfy college program requirements while enhancing nursing services to the district. This intergovernmental agreement has been reviewed by Rodney States, the district's legal counsel. Administration recommends approval.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, passage four zero. The next item is discussion and action, weeded library books and textbooks. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action to approve the weeding of outdated library and textbooks supplementary materials. The list of outdated library books and textbook supplementary materials are available at the curriculum department. In accordance with policy IJJ, textbook supplementary material, administration is recommending the removal of these books, so they may be properly disposed of in the most advantaged matters of, for the district. Thank you, Ms. Bootey.
This is a yearly process that we go through. Kelly Roberts, our media specialist, goes through our, um, our whole collection and identifies any books that are damaged or just, um, have had, probably, most of them already been pulled off the shelf because they're so damaged, um, because you don't just throw them away, you have things that you have to do with them. So, um, that's why they're coming to you at this time. So administration recommends approval.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, passage four zero. The next item, discussion and action, approval of vendor purchases exceeding the hundred thousand dollar threshold. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action to approve the expenditures exceeding the hundred thousand dollar threshold for Arizona restaurant supplies. Mr. McGovern?
Purchasing department must receive permission from the governing board before approving purchases that will put a single vendor's fiscal year total over a hundred thousand dollar threshold. Arizona restaurant supply is on a Mojave Cooperative contract and will provide new kitchen equipment for all sites. The total cost will be three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and will be funded out of food service. Administration recommends approval.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, passage four zero. The next item, discussion and action, approval of vendor purchases exceeding the hundred thousand dollar threshold. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action to approve the expenditures exceeding the hundred thou, thousand dollar threshold for Arizona furnishing. Mr. McGovern?
Purchasing department must receive permission from the governing board before approving purchases that will put a single vendor's fiscal year total over a hundred thousand dollar threshold. Arizona furnishing is on a Mojave Cooperative contract and will provide new cafeteria seating options for site cafeterias. The total cost will be four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars and will be funded out of food service.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? I think this is a great idea. It'll be nice to see some of our cafeterias to be refreshed, um, and I think it's good for the kids to, and the staff. Okay, that's all I have. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, passage four zero. The next item is discussion and action, award of contracts for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year for administrators. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take possible action regarding the award of contracts for administrators for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
It is recommended the following administrators be employed for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, pending the outcome of any discipline proceedings the governing board may initiate through the end of this school year. You have a list of all those administrators in front of you. Administration recommends approval. So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? I'm just happy that you're welcome. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, passage four zero. The next item is information and discussion items, which the board will take no action during this meeting. Does anyone have anything? Okay, hearing nothing, we'll move on to the next item, and this is information items, um, that we have in any, uh, request for agenda items. So I am going to go first. So our board member, Connie Johnson, is resigning, um, and she has sent her resignation, and she wanted me to publicly read it, so I'm gonna read it, okay? And it's with a heavy heart that I write to inform you of my decision to resign my elected position with the Sierra Vista Unified School District. As a school board member effective Monday, March seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, I have experienced health issues that have affected my ability to effectively fulfill my duties as a board member, and I feel that it is in the best interest to resign my position. I have truly loved and cherished my twenty-plus years of serving the district, teachers, students, and community of Sierra Vista. As a member of the Sierra Vista Unified School District number sixty-eight school board, please know that this decision was very difficult and certainly wasn't, has not been taken lightly. I thank the Sierra Vista community for trusting me for all these years, and you will always be in my thoughts and prayers. Sincerely, Connie Johnson. So with that being said, um, and per policy, the, um, and per policy, the office, the Cochise County School Superintendent will be putting out paperwork to fill the vacancy of the school board. And so she has, there are some hard copies out there, but you can also go to the county website and get that information on how to apply for that seat, which will, that person will fill it up until the next election in November. Is there anything else, any other requests that the board has for a future agenda item? Hearing none, is there anything from administration?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to ask the governing board for a special meeting to be held on Thursday, March twenty-ninth, to discuss the district's healthcare options for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Is there a time?
That will be determined by the board. Excuse me, Tuesday, the twenty-ninth. That's a week from today.
Later afternoon will work better. I have a dentist appointment.
We will, we will hold it whenever the board can be available.
So do, afternoons are also better. Afternoons into the evening is better for me, so.
So it's, it's four too early or five better?
Four could work for me. Does it work for you? Yeah, yeah.
So is four okay?
For the administration.
Is that good?
Thank you.
Will it be here or over at Roffery?
I think we're going to do it over there.
Roffery.
Okay.
And just an aside, I'd like to congratulate and welcome Brianna McDaniel as one of our new administrators.
Oh, she's here! We welcome you. All right. If there's anything else, isn't anything else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.